We call this meeting of the Jamestown City Council Order on Monday in the twenty-two hour voting session. Reverend Clerk please call and roll.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Here.
Brackman?
Here.
Aruba?
Here.
Reynolds?
Present.
Walther?
Here.
Eklund?
Here.
DeBurseau?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Reverend Dulce?
Here. This time, I ask you to please stand for the pledge of allegiance we made standing for our invitation tonight, which will be given by Reverend Dr. William Blair of our new Creation Assembly Guide.
United States of America, and to your republic for which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Our Heavenly Father, let your hand be upon us tonight for peace, for strength, for wisdom, for you are the prince of peace, the founder of deepest wisdom, and the strong rock on which we are able to stand. We present to you ourselves the welfare of our citizens and the business of our city, the special events, festivals that are planned for summer. We pray for no surprises that will change our budget, for the safety of our workers, for the, for, for the safety of our police and our firefighters, cause our leaders to be more than adequate for the challenges that face them, daily renew their interests, their focus and resolve. Bless them with new vision for our community and a spirit of unity as they work together leading our city and its people into a period of prosperity, strength and freedom. Let us all see with new eyes the opportunities set before us as we live and lead in our fair city. In Christ's name I pray. Amen. Thank you Reverend Clerk. At this time I have approval of minutes for the first twenty-seven meetings. So I'm going to call Reverend Aruba. Do you have any messages from the mayor this evening?
We do. Dear councilmembers, in April twenty twenty-three, we have welcomed two new employees to the city of Jamestown. Sally Ann Redney, Jamestown Police Department, and Cole Stelma, Department of Public Works. I am asking that these new hires be acknowledged and welcomed to the city at the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting. On April fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and April twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, I recognize by proclamation the retirement of two city of Jamestown employees, Bill Hanlon, Jamestown Fire Department, and Jay Wadsworth, Jamestown Police Department. Attached to this line, the retirement proclamation honoring and congratulating our retiring employees. Very truly yours, Edward Sunquist.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
No.
At this time, we give opportunities for people to address the council. If you'd like to address the council tonight, please step up to one of the two mics. Please give your name and address, and please add your remarks to the paneling to us.
Good evening. My name is Tom Nelson, Twenty-One Hunter Street, Jamestown. And I know you have a number of important issues that you're dealing with tonight, so, and I wanted to talk about three of them, so I'll be brief. First, I support the local law to increase the annual salary for the council members, especially the mayor. Having served on the council for six years, I understand the time and work that goes into this, and I believe that the increase is appropriate at this time. Secondly, I would like the council to support the creation of an ombudsman position. I feel that this would help handle the increasing number of human resources complaints. Currently, these complaints are handled by our Corporation Council, and it takes valuable time away from him and his ability to focus on numerous legal matters before the city. What I would like to see is a structure similar to what the BPU has. They have a contracted attorney, they have an HR head, and they have an IRS clerk. And finally, maybe most importantly, I would like the council to support the resolution to accept the SAFER grant and to lift the hiring freeze and allow the fire department to hire eight additional firefighters. I understand your concerns about the long-term cost, but you have an opportunity to make our city safer. You could bring the fire department to full staffing for the first time in two decades, but please vote to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Porter, forty-four Sanford Drive, Jamestown. Thank you for your time this evening. I want to begin by giving my gratitude to our firefighters who are in this room tonight, and I want to make my message clear. We are no longer accepting a city council that does not present solutions when faced with difficult tasks. I know how hard it can be to stand up against a governing body at any level, and I'm proud of the people in this room tonight who are showing their support for our fire department. This is especially difficult when we see members of that body dissenting against community outcry for an investment in public safety. We are asking you to fund our fire department, to protect our families, to protect our future, and to give Jamestown the chance to be a city that people want to continue to invest in. I am not, not asking you to have every answer. I am calling on each of you to listen to this outcry from our community and let it be the inspiration you need to do better and stand up against the reactive response of your fellow city council members. And if I'm going to ask you to find solutions, I'm going to offer my assistance. So I have made a possible first step easy for you. As mentioned in my written statement on this matter, there are hundreds of pages of grant guides available to support local officials who are seeking the funding that is needed to sustain and enhance our communities. I brought fifteen copies of the request form of these guides and have pre-checked the fire and emergency services option for you. Finally, the community is speaking up through signs, comments tonight, our varied presence in this room, and the message is strong. We will not let anyone stand in the way of progress for Jamestown. Thank you.
Ben McLaughlin, one twenty-four Cook Avenue, President of the Jamestown Firefighters. First, I want to congratulate the city, the administration, the deputy chief and grant writer Paul Pashon for successfully being awarded this grant to begin with, the Assistant to Firefighters grant, as well as the SAFER grant. They're very competitive, and a lot of, a lot of work went into them, and we appreciate it. I was able to reach out to most of the council members, and I appreciated the dialogue that we were able to have regarding the SAFER grant. While there are reasonable uncertainties of how these positions will be funded in the future, we don't know what the city finances are going to be or what the funding opportunities will be. What we do know is that we have a need, and FEMA agrees. We know that we do not meet the NFPA standard for minimum staffing. We know that the next three years, the city residents would have better fire protection, better EMS coverage, better response times, increases our firefighter safety, and lessens the burden on our neighboring volunteer communities. This grant provides the city with additional resources and prioritizes public safety. It's rare that the union, deputy chief, the mayor, and the community all agree on a particular issue. This is a good thing for all parties involved, especially the public that we serve. We ask the city council tonight to vote in favor of the resolution to lift the hiring freeze and support a safer Jamestown. Thank you.
Lieutenant Mary Martin, one twenty West Third Street, Jamestown. As a former career firefighter, I know the perils of budget and budget issues, but I feel that it's imperative to hire these new eight guys and buy ambulants, too. On right now, at the best of my knowledge, ambulance one is still at a service center using ambulances from All-Star EMS. The volunteer fire departments around here do an excellent job in helping out when things go bad, but they shouldn't be expected to cover everything. It's very, very important for the safety of Jamestown. It's a very, very busy community. For better or worse, it's busy. So please consider hiring these people. I understand when the grant runs out that the city's going to be settled with the burden of paying for them, but by then, a lot of guys will have retired. It's three years away. People are going to leave. So please, thank you for your time, and thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak as counsel?
My name is Anthony Chorin. I live at one forty-four Thibodeau Avenue in Jamestown, New York. I'm stating issues based on the actions of the City of Jamestown Corporation Council, Mr. Elliot Remondo, who was appointed by Mayor Sunquist and approved by this council. I'm referring to Mayor Remondo, or referring to Mr. Remondo's failure to initiate action to transfer a Jamestown City Court case when his legal secretary said he was doing it. When I initially called the legal secretary, Tanya Taber of the Corporation Council's office, Ms. Taber stated to me, a motion by Mr. Remondo to transfer these cases was underway. However, Council Remondo failed to make this motion. Upon my subsequent inquiries to Mr., inquiries, Ms. Taber stated to me that these traffic cases were submitted to the Jamestown City Court Judge George Ponabianco for dismissal. Now, why would Mr. Remondo fail to make a motion to transfer when Tanya of his office said that he made the motion? In fact, even Judge Ponabianco stated to me that the case would be transferred. Further, the Jamestown City Court Judge George Ponabianco, who reportedly was appointed by Mayor Sunquist to annual city council with her approval, had recused in any action regarding myself, but then disposed of these actions. This is the second time that Judge Ponabianco has made illegal decisions after he has disqualified himself. There's also a past history of illegal acts in Jamestown court involving Judge John Lemacuso in a past action, and after John Lemacuso, Judge Lemacuso had also previously recused, recused, and from his kitchen of Judge Lemacuso's own home, informed me to produce ten thousand dollars cash bail for a nonviolent misdemeanor charge. What, what would bail reformers say today about this unauthorized means by Judge Lemacuso to force excessive bail on myself? Now, referring to this ten thousand dollar bail action, after two years, there was no prosecution for the charge. I had to go to my Assemblyman William Parment to request that my bail money be returned to me. Further, the town clerk, further the then-town, uh, court clerk, I'm sorry, court clerk of the Jamestown City Court, Cheryl Dubb, told me that any actions I was in had been transferred from Jamestown to an unbiased jurisdiction where I can receive a fair trial. However, later, and over my objections, Judge Abdella of the Jamestown City Court, who had also disqualified himself from actions concerning myself, continued to preside over actions concerning myself in that same biased city Jamestown court. Now, this is a pretty good review of the kind of bias that I've been subjected to, not only by the court system in Jamestown, New York, but by the police, state agencies, and federal agencies. And this, I'm going to continue to air these complaints. People in the audience here are wondering why I'm complaining. People are bothering me. If people continue to bother me, I will continue to make my complaints.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council this evening?
I'm Doug Champion, two two-five Bond Street, and I wonder, where were all you people when I spent the last three and a half years arguing for public safety improvements? The only one, talking about your needs, American Rescue Plan, gun violence, advocating for more police, more firemen. You show up now, where have you been? I go back at the fire department long before most of you guys were born. I was the author of the Hickey Study with Dr. Harry Hickey out of University of Maryland, talking about the future of firefighting in Jamestown. What happened? Nothing. What our problem is, and I want everybody to understand that these are not bad people up here. They're not. Their fiduciary responsibility is to look at the city, not today, not tomorrow, but years from now. Only the mayor recently got on board with public safety. His first budget, his first American Rescue Plan had nothing, nothing. So here we are. This grant is a good grant. It does what you want it to do, hire more police. But are you realize the last time this city had a population increase was nineteen fifty? Nineteen fifty. Right now, we're at twenty-eight thousand, projected to go below twenty-five thousand. The problem is, this is a dying community based on attraction of population, and I've heard the story from someone said, well, more people will come. Well, more people are leaving. That's my background, economics, planning, environmental energy. The problem here is that we've never had an active plan to get rid of the old properties that you have to put out when they're gone. The most recent two fires sat there for years in a situation almost welcoming the arson. We have properties now that have been looked at with orange signs, have been there for long before the mayor was the mayor. Why? Why? We're just contributing to the problem of more fires. And now, you look at the population decline. The population decline. Western New York is losing people every day, not because we can't fight fires, it's because we don't have jobs, and the economy of New York State is taking it away from us. That's Albany. This grant, a good grant, which I argued for many times for public safety, is a fix in time. Now, the union will be looking at this, and I spent a lot of time with your former union members before you guys were born. They do a great job. You do a great job. The police does. But here's the problem. This city cannot afford in the future what you have now. It can't afford it. The taxing limit will go up to a point where they can't tax the people anymore because we have no value increases. I don't want to hear nickel and dime stuff. I'm looking at big stuff. And we can argue and say, what are we going to do about it? But these are not bad people up here. And if they vote against you, it's not because they don't like you. They're looking at the future and the economic costs associated with what they have to do. It's like you pay a mortgage. Maybe you can't pay the mortgage in a couple of years if you lose your house. The city is the same process right now. And like I said, the population is leading. We have twenty-eight thousand people here, and we have houses that were all built before nineteen forty. So what are we doing about the housing stock? What are we building? Have we built any new houses in the neighborhood? No. We're restoring the old, which is okay, but how long can you restore it? So this is my point. Public safety is a keystone of a community, of which you all do every day, and I admire you for doing that. I fought my fires in the military, so I know what you go through. But you've got to understand that signs, calling out people, making them feel like they don't belong here because they're government, it's not the way this works. We can pass a grant, they can pass a grant, and it'll work. But what I'm going to ask this union is, where are you going to be when the pink slips are handed out five years from now? Because it will be. Because we can't afford what we've got now, because it's a problem in all of New York. People don't want to live here anymore. So, that's my story. You've heard this many times before. I've been here by myself arguing public safety. I think the choice is up to your decision on what you want the city to be, not just now, but also in the future. Go for it. I have no problem with that. But I want everybody in this room to realize, down the road, the fire department and the police department will not be as it is now, because the city will not have enough money to do this. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council this evening?
John Zabrowski, two Timber Lane, Jamestown, New York. Thank you, Mr. Dulce, and member of city council, for the opportunity to address the city council in open session. In the April tenth, twenty twenty-three edition of the Post Journal, an article by Timothy Frud noted that the city administration is proposing that the city council approve adoption of a so-called New York State Climate Smart Community Pledge. The article noted, quote, "If adopted, the city would pledge to build a climate smart community, inventory emissions, plan and set goals for climate action, decrease the use of energy, transition to clean or renewable energy, implement climate smart land usage, utilize climate smart management of materials, support the innovation of green economy, enhance the community's resilience to climate change, provide information and inspiration for the public to participate in an evolving process of climate action." Anywhere. This is truly a mouthful and a monumental pledge to technologies and policies that have not been developed or vetted at the national or the state level. Our community, city and county, are fortunate to have approximately twenty percent of its workforce employed in jobs in manufacturing. In fact, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, the five counties of western New York, Allegheny, Cataragius, Chautauqua, Erie, and Niagara, account for twenty-six billion, eight hundred and fourteen million, that's billion with a B, worth of manufacturing shipments. Chautauqua County's output is five point one billion of that total. This accounts for nineteen percent of the total western New York output. Erie County Bike Comparison has fifty-nine percent of the total western New York output. But its employment base in manufacturing is just shy of ten percent. And Erie County, Erie County's total population is almost eight times that of Chautauqua County. This is truly remarkable in that Chautauqua County's manufacturing output is only three times less than that of Erie County's. So those jobs count, and those jobs are well-paying. Much of the county's manufacturing base is in and around Jamestown, in the Jamestown BPU service territory for electric, water, wastewater, district heating, district cooling, and solid waste. So as a resident and property taxpayer of the city, a business owner, an employer with its main operation in the city, and a member of the Manufacturers Association of the Southern Tier, I'm asking you to continue to study all of the ramifications of what such a pledge as this climate smart community would entail. Technology is changing at a very rapid pace, and committing to a set of pledges with its underpinnings in less-than-defined policies, or policies that could be changed at the state level without local concurrence or without understanding what technologies will enable these policies, seems hasty. Mr. Sunquist and Ms. Eklund, you will have many difficult choices to make depending on which of you will be successful in winning election for mayor this fall. This will be one of many. It will be important to hear from each of you directly on this matter, so that as constituents, we can make informed choices. But if our community is going to grow, to grow, its employment base can't do that by restricting energy consumption, handcuffing our utilities, or throttling manufacturing and manufacturing employment. This will not be part of the solution. Again, members of city council, I urge you to continue your study of this proposal. It is vastly premature to bring this to any sort of resolution for vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
So my name is Seth Bitikis, at Sanders Street, Jamestown, New York, four three. So of course, I'm in support of lifting the freeze. I'm giving the grant to the fire department. And the reason I say this is because it's an investment in our community. We always talk about, you know, investing in tourism and bringing people here, bringing businesses here. Well, if we're not willing to invest in our own fire department, invest in our safety, then that kind of pushes everyone away. So if we don't support this grant, then we're basically saying, hey, you know, this, we might as well stop the tourism campaign right now, because there won't be anyone, you know, people are, businesses are making their plans years in advance, and they're bossing stuff like this. So we need to, you know, kind of figure out, you know, this is what we have to do, invest in our community, and that requires investing in our fire department. And, you know, I get it, the money's tight, but we can always make packs, we can always do fundraisers, we can always talk to businesses, I mean, be, you know, this volunteer, you know, you don't want to raise the taxes, but you also want to, you know, talk to the community and see what can possibly be done. And of course, the gentleman was talking about how none of us were here. Well, frankly, you know, I'm kind of busy, you know, I work most of the time. So, and I, this was the first time I was, this was brought to my attention, so I'm a little late to the game. But, you know, it's, I would like to talk about it. You know, we can find solutions, and, you know, it's between the public and the private sector where we can find solutions. It's not, this one, you know, it's not up to the public, and it's not up to the private sector to find solutions. It's both. Now, the other thing is, this places a burden on the volunteer fire departments, you know, they're lacking supplies, they're lacking depressed supply of volunteers. You know, we've seen over the decades where people just don't step up anymore. You know, they're busy. They don't want to risk their lives for, you know, to do community service. So, you know, we have to understand that, you know, a stronger, stronger fire department here would, from, you know, to, you know, lessen the burden on the volunteer fire departments. And, you know, that's pretty much it. I mean, the other thing is, you know, most of us are getting poor as it is. You know, we can't pay the, you know, we can't repay repair bills. We can't, you know, fix our fire homes. There's arsons on the rise. I mean, just, you have to look at the homeless population, you know, last few fires was this caused by homeless is trying to, you know, keep themselves warm. So, you know, it's, there's so many issues to handle. You know, we have to, yeah, it's, we have to worry about the housing, but we also have to understand that fires will be on the rate, on rise in the next few years, just because nobody can afford to repair their homes. You know, that's just one of the issues, but, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Hello. Isaiah Rashad, twenty-six Prater Avenue. I wasn't, wasn't exactly sure what I was going to say, but I want to, I want to give you guys a little bit of a story, so bear with me. I was a police officer in Denver, Colorado, a state trooper, actually, and about five-thirty in the morning, get called to a quad fatal. Husband and wife, two kids. My partner and I, we rushed to the scene. When we get there, you could imagine just how bad things looked. We rushed and tried to get the two kids out of the back. We're pulling on the doors, we're trying to bust in the windows, everything we could to try to save them, not knowing whether or not they were going to be alive. Of course, we're calling for a chopper, we're calling for paramedics. We're in a major city. You think they had the resources to get somebody there, to get the fire department there, to get the ambulances there, get the choppers there? No, it took some time. We did everything we could to try to rescue the two kids, because mom and dad, it was clear that they were dead. We opened the back door- We opened the back door, finally, we see that the daughter's dead, there's a two-year-old boy. We're trying to figure out how to save them. CPR, still no ambulances. Minutes go by, feels like hours. Finally, ambulance to show up, chopper shows up, halfway to the hospital, now the baby's dead. Whole family gone. The argument was, we didn't have the resources that were necessary to help law enforcement and to help the paramedics, to help the fire department. Over the last few weeks, I've gotten to know Jamestown very well. Been here for seven years, and really got to know the men and women on the fire department. I've gone to some of the scenes with them and saw for myself that we're using resources outside of Jamestown to support us. Volunteers, volunteers who at any moment can decide that they just don't want to be here, they don't want to do anything, they have to leave their jobs, they're making decisions on the spot, am I going to go or not? Then what? Are we going to sit back and let that happen, where people aren't going to show up to help us out, when we have the ability to do it? I would say this, instead of trying to say no, let's figure out how we can say yes, if not eight, seven, if not seven, six, if not six, five. Let's meet halfway, if we can't go all the way, but let's do something that's going to help the people, help our public service. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Same number, move on, there are presentations, petitions or communications.
We did receive one email that was forwarded to Council members in support of the iCloning Act.
At this time, we'll move on to the report from our standing committees. We'll start with the Finance Committee, and their first eight resolutions will be sponsored by Councilwoman Caruba.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing payment of a regular audit.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Walter?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolez?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution lifting the hiring freeze to allow for the hiring of an outbid sum within the office of the Corporation Council.
Are there any questions or comments?
Just for clarification, this is to fill the vacancy of the Assistant Corporation Council, so this is a budgeted salary for the year twenty twenty-three, no additional incurred expense.
Any other questions, comments? If not, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Walter?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolez?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution lifting the hiring freeze to allow for the hire of eight firefighters through the Safer Grant.
Thank you, any questions or comments?
I have other questions. Couple for Chief Jackson. As the Director of Public Safety, were you involved in this grant application?
I was not.
When were you made aware of the grant application?
When we received it.
Is there a similar grant available for police staffing?
There is a COTS grant.
Is there a reason we haven't applied for that?
I remember the one year, the current comptroller at the time told me about it, and I was past the deadline to apply. However, after that, I have concerns of laying people off after the grant runs out.
Do you, do you know which public safety department had signed off on this grant application?
I do not.
Mayor Sunquist, do you?
Yes, I signed off on the application.
And one more for Mayor Sunquist, is it eight or nothing here, or is there any room, I don't know, we've got some concerns, would it be, is that something we could drop down, or is it all or nothing?
Uh, there is, we've not had that conversation with FEMA, that was not a conversation with the council, but certainly we could, we could ask, if that would be a reduction.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I'll just follow up with that. So the public knows, we have asked that question multiple times in council. If we can go down to, like Isaiah said, could we choose four, five, six? Every single time that's been brought up, we were told, no, it's eight or nothing. So we've been told over and over again that that's not an option to go down to a lower number. So I would disagree with that statement. Ms. Eklund, obviously is the finance person here, she's the numbers person, but I do have some, some concerns about this grant, and I'll kind of explain it. To the fire chief, I want to talk about training for a minute. You've told us, first off, where do most firefighters go to train at?
They usually attend to recruit firefighter training at Montour Falls.
Do you highly respect that training?
I do.
Do you highly respect instructors at that training?
I do.
Have you ever instructed at that training before?
I have not.
How many people in this room are firefighters? Please raise your hand, that work for Jamestown Fire Department, please raise your hand. If you went to Montour Falls for your training, keep your hand up. How many people went to Montour Falls for their fire training? Okay, is there anyone in the room that's a Jamestown Fire Department that has not gone to Montour Falls for training? We have five. How many of the people in this room have transferred in from other departments and went to an accredited academy? Is there anyone in this room that was trained locally here in Jamestown as fire, as we have? How many of the people in this room have transferred in from other departments and went to an accredited academy? Is there anyone in this room that was trained locally here in Jamestown as fire, as we have? The reason why I bring this up was, I decided to do a little research, and I talked to a state instructor that is an instructor at Montour Falls. I had a lengthy conversation with this state instructor, and one of the things we talked about was the training that you want to do here locally. We're talking about training thirteen individuals at this local training academy, correct?
That's correct.
Five is a result of layoffs, and eight with the ARPA funding, is that correct?
You said layoffs?
No, I'm sorry, eight FEMA and five people that were, were retiring, that's, I'm sorry, not laid off. So a total of thirteen people that you plan on, on training here.
That's correct.
So I had a conversation with a state instructor, we talked about the training that would take place here in the city of Jamestown. This person had a lot of concerns about the training that would take place here in the city of Jamestown. And I'm paraphrasing some of the things that this person said. They did agree that this, the Jamestown Fire Department didn't need, need more personnel. This person did not dispute that at all. However, he had grave concerns as a state instructor in Montour Falls, who's basically training the majority of the people in this room about the local training. And I'm paraphrasing some of the things that this person said, that the fighter academy in Montour Falls is standardized training, it's regimented training, it's not biased training, it's elite militaristic type training. This person said that if someone doesn't pass the muster, they'll be sent home. They call the department up, this person's not passing, we're washing them out. By you taking thirteen people, well, at least eight of them, you're saying by this grant that you have to employ eight people based on this grant. So you're basically telling us that eight people are automatically going to make it through this academy. You have to push eight, three, eight people through. If you have two people that aren't cutting the training, and they're going to wash out, you're going to push them through anyways, because you need eight people, you're going to push them through. Because you have to have eight people, what happens if two people wash out? So my concern is, is not necessarily the dollar amount of this. I agree, we can apply for grants and stuff later on, but I, you just told me that you revere the Montour Falls Academy, you revere them enough that majority of these people in this room have attended that academy. But I have a state instructor from Montour Falls telling me, do not hire eight people if you are not going to put them through my academy. In his words, they will be subpar. And then you are going to be stuck with this subpar employee for up to twenty years for a career. To me, that's not about a safer Jamestown. We can fill uniforms, we can, you know, we can put warm bodies in there, but if they're not up to par according to this person, I have grave concerns about that. I might be able to get by the money, we might be able to look into other grants in the future. But I don't want to see people pushed through a local academy. This person also said that there's no way they can put on an academy as good as ours. They don't have the equipment, they don't have all the apparatus, this person brought up, what happens if they have all this apparatus deployed in their training? And they get called out, and they need the apparatus, does the academy suddenly stop? And they pull away with their apparatus? Also, these are union workers, God bless them, I was part of a union too. They're going to have an equal crack at overtime, okay? If there's overtime involved, you can't pick and choose who you want to work the overtime. They're all going to have a crack at at least, at least the instructors, you're going to lose that continuity, that standardization by having a local academy. I don't think your local academy is going to be as good as your academy in Montour Falls. And if it was equal to that, and you could save money, you wouldn't be sending them to Montour Falls, you'd be having your, your academy here all the time to save money if it was, if it was equal. So that's my concern. I can get past the money, I, I can, I can, you know, look at grants down the line, I don't want to see people laid off, I said this last time. I was handed a pink slip as a, as a police officer, and quite frankly, in this city, and quite frankly, it scared the hell out of me. I didn't know how I was going to pay for my house, I didn't know how I was going to pay for my bills, and then every thirty days, I was handed a new pink slip. So I was constantly on edge. So we want to tell this council, and the citizens of Jamestown, we're going to hire eight people, but you know what? We want you to come here, we want you to make our city safer. We want you to possibly buy a home here and, and be part of this community. But you might be leaving thirty-six months from now with a pink slip. So anyone that says that I don't support public safety, quite frankly, is out of their mind. I did the job for twenty-three years, I saw what these people do for a job, I have a vast amount of respect for them, a vast amount of respect. And like I told you before, when I was sick as hell with COVID, that man back right there came into my living room and took care of me. Got an ID started in my arm, I could barely stand, and he took me to the hospital. So I have nothing against these firefighters, I'm concerned about the training that's going to happen locally. If you can sit here and tell me that you'll send off thirteen of these people to Montour Falls, I'll vote for this. I'm concerned about the training. I'll do, we'll do something about the money. I don't like gambling with people's money and, and, and trying to figure out, you know, what we're going to do in the future, but I have a problem with the training. It, it's, what I've seen in the paper and everything else is maybe this, maybe that, we hope, we hope we get the grant three years from now. Everything is based on hope, and I don't want to operate that way. The citizens put me in this position as an elected official to have a responsibility as well to, to do the right thing. I can't vote for this because of this training. If you can tell me that you'll send these thirteen individuals to Montour Falls to put them through this training, that most of them have been here, I'll vote for this.
Any questions or comments?
I'm sure you expected it. Tonight, we are faced with deciding on lifting a hiring freeze for the eight firefighters through the Safer Grant. I'm going to ask for your patience and attention while I address a few things that I have said openly, privately and publicly throughout this process. This council takes very seriously their position as an elected official. As well as considering the overall stability of the entire city. In May of twenty twenty-two, this council supported unanimously to increase the fire department personnel to a level it hadn't seen in years by adding four additional firefighters that will be funded through ARPA. In addition to this agreement of hiring four personnel, a gentleman's agreement was discussed and presented to put in place an additional ambulance to service the growing increase of nine-one-one calls. Here we are, eleven months later, and we're talking about a safer Jamestown. This council did make an attempt to make a safer Jamestown by hiring those four officials, four firefighters, and alleviating those calls, and trying to alleviate the pressure from the volunteer districts that were so graciously helping this city. Where's the resolution for the ambulance that was promised to us? Oh, it's on tonight's agenda, eleven months later. So we've lost eleven months of trying to develop a plan to keep those four firefighters after ARPA and generating revenue from an ambulance. Eleven months later, we have the four firefighters, and we have no revenue. Why did it take eleven months? These departments are truly appreciated, but also have costs to bear while they come into the city. I personally want to thank them, as well as our own department, for the work they do on a daily basis. While I have not served in the role of public safety, I have inherited it through marriage. The first time this council has ever heard about the Safer Grant from this administration was in February. We waited eleven months, now we're hearing about the ambulance. Just last month, this council also unanimously approved to replace and fill the five budgeted firefighters who have left through retirement and attrition. With that number, even if they are not hired as of today, Chief Coombe, you are four firefighters ahead of what you've been for twenty years. Now let's talk about the grant. The money that was awarded by the federal government is one point eight million dollars. The cost presented to us last week by the comptroller's office was two point one million. This two point one million did not include items such as comp time, CT Selvett, overtime including callback and off shift, and higher pay for working out of class. In twenty twenty-two, the fire department personnel expenses were roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over budget. Taking out the ARPA four firefighters, still put us roughly at a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Talking financially, this grant will not provide all those previously mentioned items I just talked about, as well as training estimated at forty-six thousand. as well as training estimated at forty-six thousand, uniforms estimated at forty-six thousand, and other incidental expenses. While people don't want to hear this, we as a council have to remain fiscally responsible in understanding the needs of our departments and empathetic to the future of Jamestown. I'm not talking about layoffs for clarity. I'm talking about the next few, three years of the grant that exists. Given those numbers that over the next three years, this council is facing a shortfall of four hundred and fif-, four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars associated with this grant alone. In addition, the four personnel from ARPA grant will be coming back on the books at an additional cost of an estimated three hundred and eighty-two thousand in the last year, partially if not all of it. Yes, the second ambulance will offset some revenue costs, but truly won't hit the seven hundred and fifty to nine hundred thousand. Yes, there are grants we can apply for and should be applying for. That is the mayor and the administration and the grant writers' job to inform the council as well as provide input to them as to what. We are nearing our taxable limit and cannot afford to continue to assume that we can go higher. There are additional expenses we are facing in this 2024 budget that we are all put in front of us, including, but not limited to, some of the votes we made tonight. As some of these items we've purchased through ARPA come off, we will be faced with maintenance costs, future longevity, and other incidentals that we will have in front of us. With no large increase in revenue planned soon, increased expenses and utilities as we see in our personal life as well as in government, as well as increased expenses, expenses and contractual obligations, we are faced with fewer and fewer areas to offset expenses. Grants are great, but we have to get them. Public safety is a prime concern of this council as well as knowing it is a twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five service that does not seek revenue to cover its direct expenses. This council has spent many hours looking at every financial piece we can. And while all of us will be ridiculed and critiqued for our vote, regardless of how we vote, this has not been a decision that we took lightly and may in fact be the hardest decision some of us will ever make as a council member. I want to thank and appreciate the Director of Public Safety, the Deputy Chief Kuhn, and the Local One Thirty-Seven Firefighters Union President for taking the time to answer questions, reach out, and discuss options with myself and other fellow council members. I also want to thank the council for opening their minds and trying to look at all areas while knowing what we have placed in a no-win situation by making this a political football arena. This should not be treated that way, and sadly, it has come to that. I am personally committed and challenging to making this community safer in all aspects and ask this administration and the fire department to work together with this council and future councils to look at the service this fire department provides and work to keep the four ARPA firefighters so no one is getting laid off in two years. I firmly believe those four fire, additional firefighters will bring it to a ten plus one. While it's not the twelve, that is in front of us is a step in the right direction. We cannot base our decisions on hopes and wishes and we must provide factual data from both past and anticipated costs in the future that we know as of today. The public needs to try and understand the implications of this grant as well as the decisive pondering many members of this council have faced. The last budget we voted on in December 2022 saw a miss of almost five hundred thousand that the council had to find and put in to make a balanced budget. Still provided, in addition, this council still added life-saving equipment for our firefighters that was not in the executive budget. This council has supported two million fifty-nine, six-fourteen point five in funding to the fire department alone since ARPA. In addition, the council has provided two point three million to the police department through ARPA. To say that this council is not driven and pays attention to public safety is a big misstatement. Point is, this council has worked very hard to provide sensible investments and support our public safety while managing the day-to-day operations of the city. Tonight's vote is a no-win situation in many ways and we must look at what we know and what we have in front of us. I challenge this administration to involve this council in decisions like this before we submit grants. In fact, I asked the mayor and his administration to provide this council with information on grants that are being applied for that require a budget expense of significance before we apply. The only way we can make Jamestown safer, better, and a place that people want to live, work, and have fun is to be a partner, not an adversary.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
I'd just like to add, I appreciate the comments and everything that my fellow council members have done and researched. I commend you for everything that you've done. But I would also like to add that two prior city controllers who were well-respected have clearly stated that the four additional firefighters that were hired through ARPA were going to stretch the city budget to its limit. Um, the idea that we would hire an additional eight would be unsustainable. And we have to look at that. And I think, I don't always agree with Mr. Champ, but I think you said it very well tonight. We have to be concerned not only with the present, but the future and the financial condition of the city. When we are reaching our constitutional taxing limit, when we are not able to raise taxes, my question to all the citizens are, what do we want us to cut? Because there's very little that we can look at that we can cut. And people will not be happy when we are looking at other departments having to eliminate staff, the roads don't get plowed, and many other things that are a choice that this council would have to make when we don't have the funds. So, that's all I can say.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question for Chief Kuhn. This local academy you're speaking of, uh, that might be held locally, will the instructors be state certified? Most of them or some of them or any of them?
Yes, they will.
So that brings up a point. As a retired police detective, I can tell you that I was a state instructor certified in many, many topics. And Jeff and I both went through the local academy that was sponsored by the Bureau of Municipal Police. And we weren't New York troopers, you know, or corrections officers at all, or D E C cops out of the Adirondacks. But we had adequate training, I believe, at a local academy utilizing state, state-approved, state-sanctioned instructors. Now, there was a variety of them and many, many different topics. So in saying that, I, I, the training issue I understand is important and it's partly paramount for these new guys. My, my second point is, by everybody being here, it's certainly obvious that there's a need for more firefighters. Four hundred and thirty-some mutual aid costs just for EMS alone last year. It's estimated that we might go upwards of close to five hundred utilizing the volunteer services, and that's not including All-Star from the surrounding communities. It's taxing them. Some of them might be one of those eight guys if we pass this tonight. So I'm strongly asking council to not just kick it down the road and let the next administration or next council worry about where we're going to get this money. Today's Post-Journal editorial, I think it was the last paragraph, said, you know, we got to think outside the box. And we got to think about different funding sources and different, and the gentleman in the bag came up with bake sales and boot drives, but we need a lot more money than that. And believe me, with the federal monies being dispersed throughout our nation, not to be political, there's a lot of funding out there. We just have to ask for it and get it. So I'm safe to say that for the next three years, we're going to have a populated fire department where we all can be proud of and we can all benefit from it. The trouble is those next years. And if we just sit back and kick it down the road and do what we've been doing for twenty years, uh, it's not going to work. But if we put our minds together and we put our state and federal resources at play, I think by all means, we might be able to sustain some more, uh, some more public safety, whether it's police, fire, or a SWAT truck, or whatever, guns, whatever we're going to do. The city is in decline. I'm not going to argue that. Population's in decline. But the violence and the trouble that is facing us daily, if you have a scan or listen to what these guys go through every day, it's amazing, the number of calls. So I'm asking all of you to really stay with us and think that maybe this council can have a change of heart from what I've heard from a few speakers. I know the financial burden is, is paramount. But, uh, public safety and the need is greater.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other?
Any other comments? Uh, I just wanted to make a couple brief comments, I think, Councilmember, I think you summed up the numbers very well. And some of the concerns that we, we have here. One of the questions, on our next resolution for purchasing the ambulance. And the question came up several times and I just want to make sure that for the public's sake, however this comes out, if it's not passed, with the addition of the four firemen, will we be able to run a second ambulance? If it's purchased? For everybody, the mayor, for, and before this SAFER grant came out, it wasn't even on the table. That was the discussion. We increased the number by four. We've hired those four extra firemen. If we purchase this ambulance, which I'm pretty sure that I speak for everybody, is probably in favor of, will we be able to effectively run that second ambulance?
Yes.
Yes.
President Goss.
Yes.
Uh, just to add on to that statement, uh, as, even though we added four additional firefighters, we were actively engaged with the union in terms of, uh, the management of the second ambulance. So we were actively working with the union to determine how staffing would, would be.
Thank you.
Chief Kuhn, when you say that we could operate a second ambulance, are you talking about at the same time, let's say there's an ambulance call on Liberty Street and there's one on South Main Street, and we need two ambulances to avoid All-Star going there or someone from an outside agency? Are you saying that we could run two ambulances simultaneously with the four and not the eight FEMA grant people?
As we discussed last year when we were deliberating hiring additional personnel with ARPA, part of that was to deploy a second ambulance. We currently send a piece of fire equipment to those calls while we await a mutual aid company to respond. So the answer is yes, we would be able to deploy a second ambulance in lieu of the bumper call.
If you send that second ambulance simultaneously, two ambulances are out on the road. What about your ladder truck?
There's no need to run.
There's no one to run.
If we deploy a second ambulance without additional personnel, um, as it stands this evening, then that piece of equipment will also not be responding to a fire call.
So you were telling, you're telling us that I could send two ambulances out at once if there's other equipment that's not going to be able to be operated?
That is correct.
So again, I want to add that those four ARPA positions are intended to only last through ARPA and there are layoffs associated with that. I am asking and urging the mayor, public safety, and the council, whether it's this council or the future councils, to work to not have those layoffs and keep those four.
Anybody else?
One question. How much does a Montour Falls training cost for firefighter days?
It's between thirty-five hundred and four thousand dollars per recruit.
And the next academy is in July, correct?
I believe it is.
Have you, have you called the academy and asked them how many slots they have available where you could send some of these people?
I have.
You have?
Mm-hmm.
Um, did you give them names or did you give them a John Doe, Jane Doe?
No, we weren't, we're not permitted to do John or Jane Does to the academy. My question to them was how many recruits would you be able to accommodate from one minute's of help? And the answer that I received from the deputy chief out there was six recruits.
And you called when? When did, how long did you wait?
When I checked in with the academy?
Yeah.
Probably about six weeks ago.
After you got the FEMA grant, that's when you called to ask?
That's correct.
You didn't, you didn't call and ask because you knew you were having five retirees, correct?
We, yes, we had five retirees.
So let's put the FEMA grant people aside.
Mm-hmm.
You knew you had five people coming up for retirement because when a firefighter retires, they have to notify you a year in advance, correct?
Of retirement, that's correct.
So you've known for a year that you were going to have five openings.
That's correct.
But yet you waited. You knew they were going to have to be replaced and they were in your, and they're in our budget. So it's not like you're not going to be able to replace them. They're in the budget. But you waited this long to contact the academy to even put those five through? Why did you do that?
The academy requires a candidate's name. And until we go through the hiring process to canvass them and select candidates, we don't have names to send them.
Fair enough. So, did you still send those five through? Montour Falls? The, the ones that are replacing the retirees? Could you call up Montour Falls tomorrow and say, I need five slots and these are the names?
Certainly.
Why don't you do that?
I'd be happy to, as soon as we have names to provide to the academy.
You haven't put them through, I mean, you haven't put them through PT tests or any kind of training or anything for those five slots? And like, why, why are you, I guess, why are you waiting so long?
Nope.
Why, why aren't you getting them ready to, to be able to send them to the training?
Until we get through the canvas period and actually be able to select candidates, the academy will not, will not hold positions unless there's a name attached to the slot.
And that's what you mean? They don't, they used to take Jane Doe, John Doe. They don't do that anymore, do they?
That's correct.
So you're saying that there's no way that these thirteen people could go to Montour Falls? They just don't have the space?
Not in one fell swoop, they do not.
I'm going to be bold. As, as the mayor says, you know, it's tough being in this, in this position. It, it, it's, you know, we've got to make tough decisions and everything else, and I agree with you, man. I'm going to bring a motion forward to table this due to some extenuating circumstances that were presented to us. There's some people that might not be happy with that also. I also believe in fate. As I sit here now, I just received a text that my brother is currently on the way to the hospital with chest pains and profuse sweating and he has a cardiac issue. I don't believe that's a coincidence, that we're sitting here talking about firefighters. So I'm asking to bring a motion forward to have this table so we can have further discussion due to certain events that we were talking about prior.
Any comments?
The only question I would have is that by tableing this another month, do we run a risk of running out of time? That's the only thing I just wanted to ask anybody to notice that.
We can certainly communicate to FEMA that there was additional information needed from the council.
Can I add a comment to that? Since you're going to communicate with FEMA? Can you also drop the eight or nothing? Maybe it's four.
If the council provides a number for us, we certainly can. That's what FEMA is going to ask us for.
We know that, that you have to hire and lose a four.
We know that, that you have to hire in groups of four generally for new hi, for, you have four platoons. So if four's the number, then let's look at four. I, I don't know what the number is. I agree. Chief, you're expert.
There's some other questions that I already have, but I wonder if I'll, later time to discuss those with you.
Absolutely.
I would like to thank Councilmember Russell for bringing that up because I was having a hard time with eight. And the fact that it was brought to us at the eleventh hour that we could perhaps hire fewer than eight, um, I, I regret that we need more time to discuss this. It was not appropriate how it was processed and how it was handled.
There's a motion on the floor to, to table.
There was a second.
There was a second. Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolez?
Aye. Resolution is tabled. For further discussion, we will have a fifth resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution designating two hundred fifty thousand dollars in no sense to purchase an additional ambulance for Jamestown Fire Department.
Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolez?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and Mark Retscher, professional engineer, to execute change order number two with Austin Schaefer Electric for Electric Work New Vehicle Maintenance Facility for a total increase of one thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolez?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor, Mark Retscher, professional engineer, to execute change order number three with Austin Schaefer Electric for Electric Work New Vehicle Maintenance Facility for a total increase of one thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolez?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor, Mark Retscher, professional engineer, to execute change order number four with Building Innovation Group for the New Vehicle Maintenance Facility for a total increase of seventeen thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolez?
Uh, we'll move on to the next set of resolutions wrote by Councilwoman Ackland. Jeff, do you want to leave?
Yes.
Okay, at this point, the next, uh, resolutions out of finance will be sponsored by Councilwoman Ackland.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and Mark Retscher, P E, to execute change order number four with Austin Schaefer Electric for Electric Work New Vehicle Maintenance Facility for a total increase of eight thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Uh, Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell? Sorry, President Dolez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and Mark Retscher, P E, to execute change order number five with Austin Schaefer Electric for Electric Work New Vehicle Maintenance Facility for a total increase of five thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Uh, Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolez?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and Mark Retscher, P E, to execute change order number five with Building Innovation Group for the Vehicle Maintenance Facility for a total increase of six thousand three hundred and eleven dollars in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Uh, Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolez?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and Mark Retscher, P E, to execute change order number six with Building Innovation Group for the New Vehicle Maintenance Facility for a total decrease of twelve thousand dollars in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Uh, Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolez?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and Mark Retscher, P E, to execute an agreement with ARPA and Concrete and Excavating for Concrete Work Right-of-Way Construction Citywide 2023 for a total bid amount of two hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolez?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and Mark Retscher, P E, to execute an agreement with ARPA and Concrete and Excavating for Concrete Work Street Reconstruction 2023, Spring Street, for a total bid amount of two hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars in no sense. This project is also funded through CHIPS.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Uh, Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolez?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm finally out of finance. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and Mark Retscher, P E, to purchase AquaSmart Packages A and H from Aquatics by Landscape Structures Incorporated for the total amount not to exceed one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars in no sense. This is from a previously approved, city council-approved ARPA fund.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Uh, Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
No.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
And President Dolez?
Aye. We'll now move on to public safety. Uh, Councilman Reynolds will sponsor the first two resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the Board of Public Utilities to install one new one-fifty watt equivalent LED L two five one dash seven five W fixture on BPU pole two-three-nine-four-five at the corner of Heffner Street and Camp.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
This was a concern raised by one of my constituents that drove by and it was pretty dark sometimes. I see that we're gonna be able to do something there.
Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have a, a resolution authorizing the Board of Public Utilities to install one new one-fifty watt equivalent LED L two five one dash seven W fixture on BPU pole three-seven-four-one-zero at Terrace Place.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Um, just a comment. I mean, this also is something that, um, I submitted from one of my constituents. I mean, this is an area that's very dark and there's vandalism in that area. So I'm for giving this poll and like put up, right?
Thank you. Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolez?
Aye. The next two resolutions will be sponsored by Councilwoman Sheldon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Local law number one, amending the city charter to effectively change the salary of electric officials.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
And President Dolez?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution reappointing Kimberly R. Stevens and Sarah B. Drake to the Office of Commissioner of Deeds in the City of Jamestown for a term of two years.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolez?
Aye. That concludes our prefiled resolutions. Do we have any reports of special committees? Report from city officers? Report from council members on administrative boards? Is there any unfinished business? Did you have one resolution under new business that will be sponsored by Councilwoman Ackland?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a, whereas that the City of Jamestown has been involved in litigation with Patterson Stevens, whereas the city, with the advice of the assistance of council, has agreed to terms of a settlement agreement that would discontinue the litigation and resolve the matter, and whereas the city has presented the terms of the settlement to their insurance carrier, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and/or his designated representative is authorized to enter into a settlement agreement with Patterson Stevens Incorporated in the amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand dollars in no sense. Additionally, Patterson Stevens Incorporated will, through its financial trust and trust financial services, issue a check payable to the City of Jamestown in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars in no sense in full satisfaction of the claims against each party. The agreement is subject to the review and approval of the Corporation Council as to form.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
And President Dolez?
Is there any other new business to come forward to?
Okay, so, um, with this being tabled tonight, we don't leave till May eighth, is that correct, clerk? Okay. So I am asking that the administration get this information to us, the sooner the better. Doing more eleven-hour footballs, um, it's not doing any service to us, to the administration, to the union, and to the community to do that. So find the magic number. Matt, you're the professional. Involve the director of public safety and put those numbers together with the help of the controller's office and, and give us all factual-based information. I know it's not gonna be to the ninth team. My numbers are not to the ninth team. But I will tell you, I spent six to eight hours rattling through everybody's personnel record and what was spent in 2022. So I feel pretty confident in my numbers.